Thank you for attending the Norwood Board of Education Meeting on February 15, 2018. I call this meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Ballard.
Here.
Atwood.
Here.
Faulkner.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Scott Draci.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt our agenda, please?
So motion.
We have a first by Ms. Ballard. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion?
Ballard.
Yes.
Atwood.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Scott Draci.
Yes. Item five is the approval of minutes. Organizational Public Hearing Records Commission Committee Meeting, January 9, 2018, a regular meeting held on January 18, 2018, and a special meeting held on January 30, 2018. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I have a first, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner. Please call the roll.
Atwood.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Scott Draci.
Yes. Item six are our presentations. Dr. Saban.
Thank you, Ms. President. We do like to celebrate our recent success, and so I'd like to bring forward our swimming coach, Jimmy Harden, to just introduce her swimming team, our swimming team. They have done extraordinarily well. Please give them a round of applause.
(Applause). At this time, if I could have the boys' high school swimming team come down there, please. I'll introduce them as they come down. We have Ahmad Oday, Caleb Barnes, Alex Ensley, Aaron Atwood, Devon Falkenstein, Jaden Coolman -- I always say Jaden's last name wrong -- and Nate Stamper.[171.23][171.23](Applause). Well, really, we're missing two. We have one swimmer that wasn't able to compete this season due to shoulder injury and surgery, but we're looking forward to having him come back next year. And then we have one other senior, Mahmoud Abudal.
Abudal.
Abudal. The kids can say it much better than I can. This season has been our second season in a row that we have been undefeated. It is awesome right now as they stand. Their record is forty-four, zero, and two. These boys have done --[216.81][216.81](Applause). They have spent a lot of time in the water, a lot of dedication, and a lot of hard work. As much as swimming is an individual sport, as you can see, it is also very much a team sport because without each other, they could never accomplish that two-year undefeated record of forty-four, zero, and two. This season alone, they have broke and re-broke six school records, including three of the relay times. And then Aaron has broke three individual event times, and Alex has broke one individual event time. Alex in the breaststroke and Aaron in the IM butterfly and backstroke. All the boys have done very well this season, as the record shows, but also at the Miami Valley Conference Championships, which were three weeks ago, they came in second. And I know everybody thinks, "Second after being undefeated." You have to realize, there are eleven to twelve teams in our conference, and all of those teams have what we call year-round or club swimmers. Kids that swim all year long, and all they really do is swim. They don't really play any other sports. None of our swimmers are club swimmers. None of our swimmers are year-round swimmers. All these boys participate in other sporting events and other activities. So to come in second in a league where all the teams that you're beating have year-round swimmers is an awesome accomplishment, and it's huge. And the only team that beat us is Seven Hills, who has like four times more swimmers than we do, and all of their swimmers are club swimmers. So it's a huge accomplishment for them to get second at Miami Valley Conference this year. Tomorrow morning, we get on a bus at 7:00 a.m. and go to districts. So three of our relays have qualified for districts, and then Aaron has qualified to swim in butterfly. So we are looking forward to tomorrow morning, and we -- the boys have had an awesome season.
Thank you.[365.12][365.12](Applause).
Thank you, Jimmy. We appreciate your dedication to the swim team. We know you love that swimming pool, and we're just so glad that you lead such a great group of students. I have fond memories of taking swimming in high school and what was the swimming pool in the middle school as a young child learning this time.
I think you're too young.
So thank you, Jimmy, for all that you've brought to that. Next, we have the high school band. We have individuals in the high school band who've done extremely well. We have Mr. Bauer with us this evening. We'd like to recognize those students. Mr. Bauer?
We can give him a round of applause.[401.81][401.81](Applause).
Thank you very much. The winter time in the band is time for individual small ensemble competitions. The band has had a wonderful winter season so far. It began early in January when Mandy Leach and Dylan Daniels performed in the District 14 Honor Band. Mandy was once again overall best overall oboe player in Cincinnati. A couple of weeks later, on January 18th and 19th, the following Norwood students participated in the Northern Kentucky University Honor Band. When I say your names, come on down. Beau Han was percussion. Aubrey Stingley was trumpet. Jeremy Myers was trumpet. Henry Mattigley made the top band and was the eighth chair out of thirty-two trumpet players. Dylan Daniels was -- made the top band and was the third chair out of thirty-two trumpet players. James Reddick made the top band and was the third chair overall of twenty flute players. Zach Cardenas made the top band and was the first chair overall, tuba out of eight players. And Mandy Leach, once again, made the top band and was first chair overall oboe. She doesn't know this, but I put it in tonight, that she was also the highest-scoring musician of the whole day at the audition process regardless of instrument.
Wow.
On February 3, at Elder High School, band members participated in the OMEA solo ensemble contest, and a lot of them are already standing in front of you. The following students received a good rating from the state of Ohio. That'd be Jeremy Myers on trumpet, Aubrey Stingley on trumpet, Beau Han on snare drum, Tapia Royal Todd on snare drum, the Norwood Knicks brass trio featuring Henry Mattigley, Zach Cardenas, and Rio Postebal, Rafael Caballo on flute. The following students received an excellent rating from the state of Ohio. That would be Sophia Wands on marimba, and the Norwood percussion ensemble featuring Victor McClure, Zach Saul, Zach Hall, Sophia Wands, and Beau Han. The following students received a superior rating, the highest rating from the state of Ohio that you can earn. Dylan Daniels on trumpet, James Reddick on flute, and Mandy Leach, once again, on oboe. This was the largest group that Norwood High School has sent a solo ensemble ever, over half the band participated. And I say "ever" very cautiously because we have our superintendent slash band historian here, always to correct when I say stuff like "ever." So as far as I can tell, it was the largest group we've had. This past Saturday, the Norwood Winter Guard began their competitive season, and they traveled all the way down to just past Louisville, Kentucky, across the river from Louisville and North Harrison High School. They placed third out of twelve guards in their class. Their members include Jada Martens, Taylor LeBeau, Christina Hall, Sebastian Spitsick, Daniel Frather, Clara Kelly, Tavion Royal Todd, Jeremy Myers, and Aubrey Stingley. They beat more guards in that one competition than they have in the last two seasons combined. They compete again at Connor -- they compete again at Connor High School this Saturday afternoon. All of these students make up a substantial portion of our high school band program. Their individual efforts this winter will make us much more powerful this fall when we assert our authority over the region once again. Thank you for your time this evening.[603.04][603.04](Applause).
Mr. Bauer, we all appreciate your enthusiasm. We know you love music, you love kids, and we love that you're leading them. And it just makes me think about how much I love my band right here. Mr. White, amazing man. So thank you to the Winter Guard, as well as the standout shining stars for the band. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Next, we always like to give an opportunity for representatives of various schools around our district to share what it is that they're learning. And tonight, our highlight school is Norwood Middle School. Principal Miller is here. I'm going to let him come up and introduce the teacher. Mr. Miller, you're welcome to come up and introduce the teacher that you have selected to share information with the students tonight. We're excited. You can see behind me, they're all set up. They are excited and nervous, but we're excited to hear what they have learned. Mr. Miller, let's give him a warm welcome.[670.00][670.00](Applause).
Yeah, do we want to --
Thank you, board.
Our seventh and eighth grade teacher, science teacher, Kelly Duncan, is here tonight. The board members would like to --
We'd love to.
If you're already on your way to --
We would love to see it.
-- to observe the experiments and things that are going on. Students, if you'd like to come on up and show us what you know.[690.00][690.00](Music).
I teach seventh and eighth grade science, and these are some of the eighth grade students that we have in Norwood Middle School. I've got Ian Davis, Shyne Seven, Taylor Primas, and Olivia Perry, and they're going to introduce various different labs we've done so far. In middle school, they learn about physical science, life science, and earth and space science, which later turned into physics, astronomy, geology, botany, all those different subjects they went into high school. These are some of the very best students. We've shown that they really like it, and they're here to show they got. So Olivia, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Olivia. I'm going to tell you about something that we did in science about how gravity affects -- yeah, I got it. No. I have two marbles, a steel one and a plastic. The steel weighs twenty-eight point twenty grams, and the plastic weighs four point zero six grams. I'm going to let you pass them around so you can feel the difference. The question is, does the mass of the marble increase the speed down the ramp significantly? We have the first one, the plastic one, that weighs four point zero six grams at zero centimeters, and its speed is point zero zero six seven. Then we have the steel marble that weighs twenty-eight point twenty grams. And it went point zero zero six six. As you can tell, when you have two -- as you can tell, if you think about the question, the answer is no. Gravity acts on all matter the same. If I had a bowling ball and the feather and a feather, and I dropped them in a vacuum like space, they will land at the same time. But in a normal atmosphere like Earth, you will have more friction because it has more surface area. Thank you. My name is --[883.16][883.16](Applause). Okay, so in this lab, we asked if force, mass, and acceleration was related. So we had two labs, one with the same clay ball, but we added weights, and the second one, we had the same weight, but we added force. So when I take this one, it's fifty grams. And you see the force? It is enough to like cool the car. But when we added weights, the acceleration increased and it changed.
So you've got to taste what exactly happens in our classroom.[922.00][922.00](Laughter).
So the ball was fifty grams, and it traveled at zero point one zero zero three seconds. Now, when I add weight, the acceleration will decrease. But as force increases, so does acceleration. As mass increases with the same force, acceleration decreases. So as you can tell, force, mass, and acceleration are all related.[944.13][944.13](Applause). So in this lab, we learned about how slope affects force. So for the first setting, it takes about one Newton to balance out the ramp. And then when you move it up to the second setting, it takes about two Newtons, which is more force, and it will keep increasing. when you move it to the third setting, it takes about three Newtons.
So this is an intro to how you have balanced forces with a new second law, and then it follows into the other lab where they vary the force or the mass of the object. These all are working with these new types of demonstrations that CPO has. When I was coming through the school system, we had to use like a stopwatch and hope you had it somewhere close. But with, say, with Olivia's, it measures it within one thousandth of a cent or a second. So it's very, very accurate, and even in these types of labs can vary. They have different levels. They go all the way from advanced high school all the way -- you can even twist them a little bit to go even elementary. So pretty good. And Ian is going to do one of them, he'll be doing it in the next couple of weeks, where he's going to show his promoter and electromagnetism. Yeah, so as my colleagues have said before, they've done some labs that we just recently completed in the past. We've done reports on them. We've done all sorts of analyzations, but this is one that we haven't quite done yet. So you guys are actually getting a glimpse at it before. Most of the student body does. And this is basically demonstrating how an electromagnet can work and how it can attract basically a wheel of differentiated magnets. So if you look at it, you can see that there are six bars around the perimeter of the orange circle, and those are our magnets. The red is representing north polarity and the white is representing south. Now, as of now, if you can see, this has a magnet under it. It's a very basic magnet. It's got very low attraction, and it doesn't have a current running through it right now. So if I were to just barely offset that, you can see how the magnet moves just very slightly. However, we have our batteries plugged up, and we hit the switch to put a current through the magnet, then it gains some power. And basically, if you can see, the dot down here is lit up, signifying that it's currently at a southern polarity. It's basically attracting with a south force, which means that it's attracting this red bar, which is representing north, and it's pushing away these south. Now, here's where things let it spin, because if you notice, I can just give it a little push, and it'll start spinning. But what really makes it go is if you notice, there are clear and there are black sections on the ring. There's a small laser that basically detects if one of these black rings is obstructing. If the clear ring isn't obstructing it, then we get a north polarity. If it is, then we get a south. And basically, as these polarities switch due to the background switching, the polarity quickly moves, which allows the electromagnet to endlessly pull the upcoming bar magnet and push the previous one away. And this science is used in all sorts of things, and especially things you may have heard of, things like maglev trains, that basically whenever the front end of the train gets close, the magnets ahead of it are conducted with electricity, and they pull the train forwards as the previous ones push the train forward. And because the train is elevated on a cushion of air and not actually moving with wheels or sliding, it can greatly reduce the friction, saving fuel, saving energy, saving just about anything. And this lab just goes to show that even a student, even a little kid, can operate this sort of thing.[1257.49][1257.49](Laughter). Our technology has come far enough that we can bring things that just a few hundred years ago would have been cursed as black magic or as witchcraft, but now it's something that I can explain to you here in under five minutes. Thank you.[1275.00][1275.00](Applause). Goodness, eighth grade, and thanks to Taylor, Diane, Olivia, Ian. Another example of that other than a train is a fan. All of those use electromagnets to spin, or else you have massive gears breaking and all that good stuff. But still learn a lot of it. Hopefully, we're going to build one of those trains when Ian's out, Ian's out. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan.[1308.83][1308.83](Applause). To continue with our recognition, we would like to highlight our rising stars this month. So we'll begin with Norwood High School. Students, your name will be called by me. I'm going to ask you to come down and get your certificate from our board president, Mrs. Jerry Scott Draci. And then you'll stand right here in front of the table. At the end, you'll get some lovely photos, and then of course, at the very end, you'll go out into the main lobby area and get some even more great photos. So hang with me here for this moment. I'm going to read all about you, and it's going to be absolutely amazing. What was written about you was written by your teachers. So to begin, for Norwood High School's Rising Star students for the month of February, they are Jacob Wilder and Dahlia Khalil. Jacob Wilder is a one-of-a-kind. Once you meet him, he's your friend for life, and he will make you laugh all the time. Jacob has had an interesting year due to some health issues. However, this teacher is very proud of reports that he's fighting through those issues like a champ. And after an extended stay in the hospital, Jacob came back to school. He was determined to catch up on all his work and pass all of his classes. Even when they talked to him about exempting some of the work that he missed while he was in the hospital, he told them, "No way." He wanted to complete all of the assignments on his own. Jacob's perseverance showed -- he was able to show is to be admired by all. He continues to press on, fighting to overcome the obstacles in front of him, and he continues to do it with a great sense of humor. And we're all calling for Jacob. We are certainly very proud of him. Jacob is truly a Norwood rising star, and it's students like Jacob that make Norwood City Schools great. And even though he's not here, let's give him a round of applause.[1430.11][1430.11](Applause). Dahlia Khalil is a freshman at Norwood High School, and she's already leaving her mark on our school. Dahlia's teachers are incredibly impressed with her intrinsic motivation in the classroom. Dr. Draci reports that she works with much enthusiasm, she works well with others, and on all of her assignments, they're always on time. Dahlia's Spanish teacher, Mrs. Kimpelin, admires Dahlia's love of her own heritage, her awesome attitude, and her willingness to be a leader in the classroom. Mrs. Martin describes Dahlia as being relentless in her pursuit of academic excellence. What an incredible young lady. Not only does she excel academically, but she's also a valuable member of Norwood Athletics. Dahlia is truly a rising star, and she makes the Norwood City Schools great.[1482.04][1482.04](Applause). Norwood Middle School Rising Star students for February are Case Garibay and Carnia James. Case Garibay is the Rising Star student for the month of February. He's an incredible example of an outstanding student and young adult. As an eighth grader, he has maintained an A average in all of his classes. Case has incredible attention to detail and strives to do his best on all assignments. Case loves algebra. He finds math to be interesting and challenging. Case is also a member of National Honor Society. In the future, Case hopes to attend Miami University or Xavier University to study architecture. Outside of Norwood Middle School, Case has played hockey for six years. He currently plays for the Cincinnati Soars. Case is an asset to Norwood Middle School. His desire to learn, undeniable work ethic, and his pride for Norwood Middle School are an example of what makes Norwood City Schools great.[1548.73][1548.73](Applause). Carnia James is the seventh grade Rising Star for the month of February. Carnia sets an example by demonstrating peace builder pride, digital dignity, and Norwood pride each and every day at school. Academically, she excels in math, cheerleading, and living a healthy lifestyle. Carnia credits her success in school to her own drive to be successful and keeping a steady schedule. Carnia is an active member of the cheerleading team and plays clarinet in the band. Certainly, her involvement in Norwood activities and in the Norwood community demonstrate her commitment to being a positive influence at school. Carnia wants to earn all A's throughout her entire stay at Norwood Middle School, and eventually, she wants to attend Harvard University and earn a law degree. Norwood is expecting big things from Carnia in the future, and it's students like her that make Norwood Middle School a Hall of Fame school and Norwood City Schools great.[1611.66][1611.66](Applause). Sharksburg Elementary and Primary School Rising Star students are Naveya Boden and Aaron Daniels. Naveya is such a pleasure to teach and to know. She is very driven to do her best each and every day. Naveya is extremely conscientious and wants to do the right things. Naveya has one goal in mind when she is here at school, and that is to learn as much as she can. Naveya challenges herself with extra reading and math on a daily basis. Not only is Naveya a wonderful student, but she's a friend to all. She's willing to help other students and does this without being asked or expecting anything in return. Naveya is a very deserving student of the Rising Star Award. We have no doubt that Naveya will soar. It's students like Naveya that make Norwood City Schools great.[1669.23][1669.23](Applause). Aaron Daniels is the epitome of a star student. Aaron is at school every day on time with a smile on her face. She participates in both before and after-school clubs, as well as activities outside of school such as gymnastics and dance. Aaron is truly a phenomenal student with a strong work ethic and a keen desire to learn. Her willingness to work hard to achieve academic success is truly outstanding. Aaron displays perseverance and self-discipline on a daily basis in and out of the classroom. Aaron is an active participator and always willing to help another student in need. Not only is Aaron helpful to other students, but she's also a wonderful teacher assistant. She's always seeking out opportunities to help other teachers, as well as help improve her school. Aaron keeps herself actively engaged in her own learning. Aaron's not afraid to ask questions in class and is always willing to accept any challenge that's presented to her. She goes above and beyond in her learning by taking notes in class, conferencing with teachers about her work, and using free time to perfect her academic skills. She's a natural leader in the classroom and a skilled problem solver. It's a true pleasure to teach and work with Aaron, and it's students like Aaron that make Norwood City Schools great.[1752.61][1752.61](Applause). Norwood View Elementary School Rising Star students for February are Joshua Henry and Daniel Drake. This first grader is Joshua Henry, and as a Norwood View Rising Star student for the month of February, Joshua is conscientious, a hard worker. He works hard every day, every minute of the day. In addition, Joshua is a kind, understanding friend to all the children in the classroom. Joshua's favorite activity in school is math, because he likes to figure things out. When he grows up, Joshua would like to be a police officer so he can help people and make them safe. He's a role model for all, and we are so happy to know him. It's students like Joshua that make Norwood City Schools great. It's students like Joshua that make Norwood City Schools great. The teachers at Norwood View have nominated Daniel Drake, and Daniel, they say, is a kind, considerate, and friend to anyone he meets. He approaches every day and task with a positive attitude and smile. He achieves success academically, artistically, musically, and physically. He displays fierce athleticism and his natural abilities when it comes to playing sports. Daniel is a joy to have in class and to be around in general. He can brighten anyone's day and put you in a good mood. We're so happy and lucky to have our ray of sunshine shining here at Norwood View. It's students like Daniel that make Norwood City Schools great. Williams Avenue Elementary School Rising Star students for February are Ally Winchester and Laney Murphy. Ally Winchester is a sixth grade Rising Star. Ally is extremely hardworking as a student who is also a role model for other students. She's constantly working hard, but still maintains a fun and positive attitude. She works very hard to meet her goals and always tries her best in the classroom. She's respectful to others around her, including students, staff members, and even substitute teachers. We can count on Ally to be a champ, students who always work to the best of their ability. Ally is a terrific peace builder and we know that she truly embodies the peace builder characteristics. She gives her best effort no matter the situation and her work ethic is impressive. She takes responsibility for her schoolwork, ensuring that she does the best she can. We are so proud to have Ally as our Rising Star for February, and we know that she will continue to rise with the challenge as she continues to Norwood City Schools. It's students like Ally that make Norwood City Schools great. The fifth grader at Williams Avenue Elementary is Laney Murphy, and he's our Rising Star. As a student, Laney, excuse me, Laney, sorry. Laney is academically driven to challenge herself to master concepts and apply them in other subjects. Her academic growth for the first half of the year is off the charts. Even as an elementary student, she has had a dedication to not only completing work, but challenging herself and the quality of the work she submits and being better than the time before. She raises thought-provoking questions to add to discussion and seeks out opportunities to learn more on new topics. If she cannot find an answer to a problem, she is exhausted all the possibilities trying to find the answer. Even more impressive than Laney's academic abilities is her genuineness of her character. Laney exemplifies what it means to be kind, thoughtful, and considerate. She's helpful and kind in class and always willing to work with and help anyone who needs it. In class, she always looks out for her peers and finds ways to focus on each of her classmates' positive attributes so that they too can succeed in both academic and social situations. She makes wise choices to surround herself with friends and adults who would be a positive influence in her life. We are super proud of Laney and all of her achievements in fifth grade this year. It's students like Laney that make Norwood City Schools great. Stay right there, Rising Stars, because we want to shake your hand and get an awesome photo of you. To moms and dads, this is an opportunity for you to get a photo with our board of education. And just after this photo, you'll go out into the hallway, and this is happening here in the red corner, we take some more great photos. And those photos will be in our newspaper. Okay, are you ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven is Education Committee Report. Ms. Amber Ballard.
Madam President, I'd like to put up the following items for approval. Item A, approval of the 2018-2019 conference dates for the Norwood High School and Middle School Parent Teacher Conference. Following dates, Thursday, September 20th, 2018; Thursday, October 25th, 2018; Thursday, January 24th, 2019; Thursday, February 21st, 2019. All of those taking place between 4:00 and 7:30 p.m. Second item, approval of the Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services 2018-2019 school year. And item C, I'd like to make mention, there is a change on that. It is listed as Norwood Middle School Field Trip. However, it is actually Norwood High School, so you can make that adjustment. Is a student field trip for the Norwood High School Winter Guard to North Harrison High School in Ramsey, Indiana for the Circuit Winter Guard Competition, which takes place February 10th, 2018, 8:00 to 6:00 p.m. Or 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., excuse me. May I have a motion? Or if there like to be any discussion?
You can make the motion.
I can make the motion? Well, then I'll go ahead and motion. Motion away.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Thank you.
We have a first by Ms. Ballard and a second by Mr. Atwood. Please call the roll.
Ballard.
Yes.
Atwood.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Bryant.
Yes.
Scott Durecy.
Yes. Next item is Personnel Superintendent Recommendations. Dr. Sabo.
Thank you, Madam President and Board. I'd like to make the following recommendations with regard to personnel. Number one, you see is a resignation. Two are mentors for the 2017-18 school year. Number three is certified supplemental contracts. And we see on the, if you flip the page over, we see also a recommendation for pupil activity contracts. That concludes my recommendations.
Any discussion? We have a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Bryant, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner.
Bryant.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Atwood.
Yes.
Scott Durecy.
Yes. Next item is the Policy Committee Report. Mr. Atwood.
For this month, there are no policy updates to approve, so we'll not be needing to make any motions.
All right. Thank you. Item 10 is the Building and Grounds Committee. Mr. Bryant.
Yes, Madam President, with the board's approval, I'd like to make a motion for the use of facilities for the Norwood Little Indians Shea Stadium Pee Wee Football. The dates are listed there from 8:25 to 11:10 2008-18, from 7:00 a.m. to 10 o'clock p.m.
Any discussion? All right. We have a motion for approval. We have a motion for Mr. Bryant. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Atwood.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Scott Durecy.
Yes. Next item is the Finance Committee Report. Mr. Faulkner.
Thank you, Madam President. By recommendation of committee, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of Items 11A, the Financial Reports for January 2017, which are the Treasurer's Report and Bank Precipitation, the FINSUM, the ABSUM, and the Check Registry. Item B, approval of the grant for the Teaching Tolerance of Education for $10,000. C, the approval of Business Advisory Council. D, the approval of the bid to advertise for the Norwood Middle School Innovation Project. E, the School Resource Officer Contract for Hamilton County Sheriff's Deputies. G, the Service Agreement with Hamilton County Educational Services. And H, the approval of United Way Greater Cincinnati Memorandum of Understanding, approving Norwood Ready Kids.
Any discussion?
We need a second.
We need a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant.
I do have one question. The item number C, that's just our agreement with Hamilton County Educational Services.
That's right. That's correct.
Okay.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Atwood.
Yes.
Scott Durecy.
Yes. Item 12 is Hearing of the Public. We do not have any requests this evening. Item 13, Board Announcements. Do you have any board announcements? Next item is the--
I do have one announcement.
Okay.
I will not be at the March meeting next month, so just wanted to give notice to the rest of the board. I will be out of the country, but I'll be back for the following full month board meeting late in March.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sabo.
Thank you, Madam President and the Board. We do have wonderful news to share. Our seventh grade boys' basketball team won the league and the team and the cheerleaders will be recognized next month. Tonight's a big night for them. They have the middle school dance. Our eighth grade wrestling team also won the league and they will be recognized in it next month. And you don't see them this month because they too all have that middle school dance tonight. We will be placing two Wounded Warrior Reserve parking spaces in our lot to provide a parking convenience to our veterans. Those were donated to us free and we certainly thought that would be a wonderful way to honor our veterans. Additionally, we have plans to add a few Alumni Association parking spaces so that our alumni can have closer access to the alumni entrance. And we appreciate their years of experience and effort in making our alumni room an exceptional representation of our traditions and our history. Tomorrow, our teachers will benefit from a day of professional development, and I want to thank you for your support in the professional development of our teachers. And then, on behalf of our school district, I certainly want to extend a sincere sympathy to our colleagues, the students, and the families at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Next item is the Great Oaks Report. Mr. Faulkner.
Thank you, Madam President. The Great Oaks meeting was last night and Miss Ellis reported to me that they discussed some policy changes, an upcoming levy for the Oaks that they're working on right now. And also, they've talked about enrollment. Norwood has 36 students currently, or about 36 students currently at the Oaks, is what they said. And that's all we have to report.
All right. Thank you. Next item is Avenues for Success. Ms. Ballen.
Yes, I did have a short meeting with our Avenue Success contract, and she had promised to email me some documents about spending and grants and things like that, but I haven't received that document yet for a full report. Hopefully, I'll have that by the time I come back next month. But she did say they are hard at work getting planning together for their May 12 event, that the avenues for success hosts towards the end of the school year with the Glow for the Cure. So they will be focusing on that currently, and then hopefully, I'll have the rest of the numbers for you next month.
All right. Thank you. Next item is the Legislative Report, and that is, I do not have anything to report this month. Next item is Meeting Notification. All meetings listed below are held in the Board of Education Meeting Room unless noted. 2132 Williams Avenue, Norwood, Ohio 45212. Our next committee meeting will be Tuesday, March 6th at 5:30, and that will be in our, at Williams Avenue, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, following that, our regular board meeting will be Thursday, March 15th here in the mini auditorium. May I have a motion to approve the meetings?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Approved by Mr. Atwood. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion?
Atwood.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Scott Durecy.
Yes. Next item is Executive Session. We will be going into executive session in accordance with ORC 121.22G1. The Appointment, Employment, Dismissal, Discipline, Promotion, Demotion, or Compensation of a Public Employee or Official, or the Investigation of Charges or Complaints Against a Public Employee, Official, Licensee, or Regulated Individual. Item 2, in accordance with ORC 121.22G2, the Purchase of Property for Public Purposes or for the Sale of Property at Competitive Bidding. Item 5, in accordance with ORC 121.22G5, Matters Required to be Kept Confidential by Federal Law or Regulations or State Statutes. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll motion.
First by Ms. Amber. Ballard, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood.
Ballard.
Yes.
Atwood.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Scott Durecy.
Yes. We will go into executive session at 6:47.